I'm sure you would have put one there.
Oh. Yeah, I saw it across the street. And I guess you have to have it. Yeah, I didn't know. I found one like down.
All right. Is that Jeff Scott talking in the background? All right. Ethan, are you ready to go? We can start the meeting and do non agenda items and then go into the remote. Go into the two pre application meetings that we have.
Right. Right. Okay. Welcome to the Town of Camden Planning Board Meeting December sixteen twenty twenty one. We have a couple of items on the agenda, but first we're going to ask if anyone has any non agenda items. Looking for anyone?
I got nothing. Oh, okay. I will say here's a non agenda item Ethan. The select board chatted the other day and I think some of them maybe. I don't know. Want to update on things on where we are. So I'm thinking maybe at some point Ethan, you can as Chair can come to the select board meeting for a very brief. This is what we're doing. This is what we've been doing kind of thing.
Okay.
That's all right. I mean, I'll work with you on that. I don't even know for sure. And it just came up the other day, so. We'll go from there. Sound?
Okay. That would be fine by me.
Okay.
So next we have the adoption or extension of the remote meeting policy. That's item number two. As you all know with COVID, we've been extending the remote meeting policy and we need to renew that again. We discussed this last meeting. And also with some of our members traveling and that sort of thing, it certainly makes it easier to accommodate attendance. So I certainly am in favor of extending. As Jeremy's noted before, the select board has been meeting in person. And it's certainly an option, but my my vote is to go on and extend. And I think Jeremy drafted something for us.
I did. It's the same. It's the same policy had the whole time that we've adopted the last, you know, we've done it two sixty or how many sixty day extensions on this? It's the same thing. I will say I think it. You know, I think it does enable people to attend. You know, pretty easily. I do think there's being in person. But I think as we discussed last week with the increased or two weeks ago increased COVID instances, and I know other people are meeting and I get that. But I think the board appears to be comfortable and wants to continue down this road, at least for the the time being. We can revisit it at any time. So.
Pat, did you want to say something?
Uh, no.
Oh, it looked like you had your hand up, but I couldn't tell if it was just.
Oh, sorry. No, I was just holding my arm. No, sorry. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone on the board want to jump in on this one? Any discussion about it? Or are we all set to just go ahead and approve?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Anyone else? I guess we need a motion.
Andy's muted. And then remember, you have to do a roll call though.
Yep.
And I'm in favor of continuing. I think it seems to work well. Having come, I'm just coming off of ten days of COVID isolation myself, so. I wouldn't wish that on anyone.
Yeah. So I moved that we adopt the a remote meeting policy. I'm not sure what else I need to say in that motion.
That's fine.
That's gonna do it for me. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I will take a roll call vote. Anita?
I.
Pat?
I.
Andy?
I.
Chris O.
I.
And Mark?
Hi.
It's an eye from me. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeremy. So that then moves us into the meet of the meeting tonight. Number three on the agenda is site plan review, the pre application meeting for a proposal for a pier in the Outer Harbor. And I think this is where I let Jeremy do a quick review and then we turn it over to Will to walk us through it.
All right, you. Yeah. And so this is a proposed pier in the Outer Harbor at I think twenty six Harbor Road. One twenty four lot nineteen. It's John Rixon and Mary Kelly. This pier has been reviewed by the Harbor Committee. Mark's on the Harbor Committee. They reviewed it last week and they did draft some. I don't know the recommendations. I think what they do is they advise and consent this the select board. So the process for these peers is they go to get reviewed by the Harbor Committee. Under the Harbor Ordinance, they get reviewed by the planning board under the zoning ordinance and approval criteria contained within that. And then they have to go to the select board and the select board reviews them based on, for the most part, the same criteria that the Harbor Committee reviewed them under. So these are, it is a requirement under, you know, Article twelve of the zoning ordinance for site plan approval. And this is a pre application meeting for that. I will say that there will be a public hearing and all that on this. The project also has to get approved by the main DEP as well as the Army Corps and like Will will tell you that that's in motion. So Will, if you want to take it from here, and we do have just for we do have two other people in in the meeting and it looks like Marcy Anis and Sherry, and I believe they're here for the one hundred Mount Batty project. So I'm just letting you know that those folks are there for that. And I have not gotten any comments. Sherry did send some comments. I did send them along, but we can talk about that later. That's for the next project. No comments about this at all from anybody. Will, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. Hello, everyone. Um, you've actually summarized it pretty well. John and Mary are looking to construct up here. It's going to be supported by two granite piles. And it'll be constructed using blue laminated timbers. The total length of the permanent.
Do you want to share your screen?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Yep. I can do that. Is everybody seeing that or?
Yeah.
Now.
Yep.
Okay. So this is the the plan view and their house is up here. Harbor Road is down at the bottom of the page. Marine Marine Avenue would be the next street. That's a couple of properties along the shore to the north. Just to kind of give you an idea, Insurance Cove. And this is the permanent structure out to this point, which stops a little bit short of mean low water. These are the location of the granite cribs. And then the permanent dock on the top, which is about five feet wide and then rail post outboard of that five feet. They've got a proposing a twelve by twenty float and a forty five foot gangway, which gets us to the maximum beyond the end of the permanent pier of fifty feet. The ordinance only requires us to go out a hundred feet beyond mean high water or to mean low water, whichever is the greatest. And we're below both of those. Mean low water is right here and we're stopping back to shy of that. And from mean high water to the end is eighty six feet. So we had a little bit of room to spare. The fifty feet, though, we are maxing out and part of that is because forty five foot gangway. If it goes much shorter than that at low water, it becomes really steep. Um, so that fifty foot distance is is kind of you know, limiting with regards to the steepness of a gangway, but it certainly works. As Jeremy said, we've submitted to DEP. I actually had a site walk with DEP a couple of weeks ago. Two members of the staff came and took a look at the site. I haven't heard anything from the Army Corps. They're like everybody right now, though very busy, so. We're hoping to hear from them soon. Our next step would be come back to you guys to review the review criteria. And then onto the select board. Hopefully have the permits from the Corps and the DEP by then.
And just so everyone knows, I mean, their shoreline zoning governs this, regulates this, and the approval criteria in Article twelve, it's section six. That's that's what you will review it under. Just letting you know. So when you there's some specific criteria there, but it's you'll go through that process to just be aware of that. I could go over that now if you feel it's necessary or Will can kind of you know, kind of keep going. I think from my perspective, these pre at meetings are very helpful because this is a good time to you know, ask questions from the applicant or from me or, you know, what's required. Again, the next step would be to get this on a regular agenda for your approval and the better time to address things or tweak things on the plan or the proposal would be from now until when they submit formally for for the your approval. So. Feel free to ask Will any questions and Will, you can keep going on the elevation if you want.
Yeah, I scroll. I just scrolled down the page a little bit to give everybody a sense of what it would look like from the side. You can see the two granite cribs and these are the blue laminated timbers and the rail system. It is quite a steep slope at the property from the house down to the water. So there's a proposed set of stairs to get down there. This line right here represents mean low water and this is mean high water and then highest annual tide of the year. We're allowed to be six feet above mean high water, which is what we're proposing. I think otherwise it's it's pretty straightforward.
Well, I was just gonna comment, you know, I mean, I think the board is, I don't think obviously heard one of these requests before.
Yep.
Is this? We, you know, obviously there's a number of peers out in the harbor already. Is is this kind of similar for the most part is is all those approvals in the sense kind of it's being built and constructed and designed the same way as everything else that's kind of out in the harbor?
Yeah, it's very similar. The first pier, as you go past the yacht club on that side of the Outer Harbor on the West Oly side is built almost exactly like this, the laminated timbers.
Could you zoom out on the plan and maybe show a different zoom or a higher, you know, from possible?
Is that what you meant?
Yeah, like can you see? Do you have a picture of any or a photo? I know when we went to the Harbor Committee, you were able to see the adjacent pier.
Um, oh, the aerial photograph.
Yeah, do you have?
Oh, there is. That's true. Just to the south of this property. Let me see it in this in the submission. That's Crane's board. Sorry. Did I have a? I mean, here's a tax map view and this is where we're proposing to put the pier. This property right here does have a pier that is built almost exactly the same. That one's right here. There's one that's been in the harbor for years right in this area. And then you get over to here and this is Lim and Morse and this is the harbor condos, just to give you a sense. Beyond Marina, there is prohibition against any additional peers. So there really probably won't be any additional further to the north. Oh yeah, there's the aerial photograph right there. So this is the proposed pier superimposed onto the aerial and this is the brace pier. I think that one was constructed maybe six or seven years ago in conjunction with a pretty major shoreline stabilization.
Yeah, alright. That's helpful, I think.
Yeah, and Will, thank you for the presentation. As far as the approval criteria are concerned, are there any that we should be paying specific attention to? In in your opinion, that was for Will, but you can answer too, Jeremy.
No, I'd like to know Will's opinion on that and then I can pipe in too.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, I mean, we paid attention to those. I mean, there's a couple that are a little bit subjective, but otherwise I think the a lot of them are, you know, simply numerical, you know, like you can't be longer than this. You can't be higher than that and it can't be wider than this. So it's relatively straightforward. We have talked with Steve Pixley. There is, you can kind of see the mornings in the boats. There's also a couple smaller mornings over in this area where our label is. He's gonna take a closer look at that to see if they need to be adjusted. I mean, we we looked at that before we laid this out, trying to make sure we were avoiding impacts to mornings as much as possible. So I'm hopeful that that they're not going to have to be moved, but Steve wasn't too concerned about adjusting if he needed to.
Yeah.
Um. So Ethan.
Yes, Mark.
I can chime in here a little bit on what the Harbor Committee found.
Yeah, that would be great.
And there were, there were two adjustments that were made and one was on the float. They had pilings that the float rested on which exceeded the height limits and they've eliminated those pilings. But the other thing was there was a gantry at the end of the pier which exceeded the height limit and they've changed that to a a removable or temporary structure.
Okay.
And the other thing, the other thing was that the Steve Pixley was going to contact any any boring boring owners that were affected by this. If they were. And that's it.
Mark, they also mentioned, didn't someone say something about lighting?
Oh, yes. Well, the question, yeah, the question was asked whether there's going to be lighting.
Right.
And they do plan to to put some really low voltage sconce lights on the post. And it's gonna be very similar to what is on the brace pier. And the intent is to just have some low level lighting on the walkway of the pier and have it on when it's when it's in use. So I'm gonna, when I submit the rest of the materials, I'll have a cut sheet to show you what those look like.
Yeah. Um, and Ethan, another comment, at least on the approval criteria.
Yeah.
Specific section, which is number ten in.
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now, but is there anything else that we're we're looking at for that?
I I don't think so. I mean, I think it's the standard, you know, a lot of these, I think, in my opinion, are not applicable.
Right. And but we're talking like Mark was referencing height and things like that. Where are those criteria coming from?
Those are actually in, hold on.
In the Harbor Ordinance?
Yeah, they're in the Harbor Ordinance, but they're also, they're also in the performance standards in the shoreline zone, shoreline areas, article section one.
Okay.
And so those generally match up with the harbor or talks about the height, not ears. You want me to try to find it or I could read you some of the standards?
Yeah, it's um. I think it's always helpful for the board when those when the when the applicable standards are highlighted for us, you know, obviously we can dig them up as well. But as you said, I don't think any bit on this board, maybe Mark, but I don't think any of this board is done a peer approval before.
No, agreed. And I have this document ready for you and I thought I sent it and I obviously didn't. So. And it was really just that section of the shoreline zoning ordinance. Keep in mind that the approval criteria that you're reviewing site plan approval is what it is. And you've got that one section about causing degradation in marine life, etc. This, the other standards in the performance standards. So a lot of them, like Will said, are very, they're numbers for no more than one pier or dock on a lot, right? No structures on them. Access from the shore developed on soils appropriate for for the construction so as to control erosion. Location shall not interfere with existing development or natural beach areas. The facility need to minimize minimize adverse effects on fisheries. Facilities no larger dimension than necessary to carry on the activity and be consistent with surrounding character and uses of the area. Then there's a comment about temporary pier, dock or wharf. No new structures can be built on it. Permanent peers on docks untied non tied what was not us. That's for in the in the lake. Structures can be extended, you know, beyond normal high water. Well, we don't have any of those. Vegetation may be removed in excess of the standard to conduct erosion shoreline stabilization. That's probably what they did when the brace pier was re was approved. They probably looked at that. Removal of trees and other vegetation to allow for construction equipment to access can pass no more than twelve feet in width. So that is something that we could talk about and work with the make sure shown on the plan.
Jeremy, where where are you getting this?
I'm getting this. I'm sorry. This this is in Article ten, part one, section one. And then we go to eight, which is peers and other structures.
Right, eight and eight C.
So we got eight and eight A apply to all of these things. And then eight B applies to peers specifically. And that's where we get into the height requirements. Will talks about height.
Yep.
So that's where those things are. So and it's the the width of the of the walkway. And that's why the width of the walkway is what it is. And talks about fenders and bollards and railings. Not extending six feet in height. Again, these match up with what the Harbor Committee reviewed. And that's why, like Mark said, you know, they have, they've tweaked the design a little bit. They removed, they made something temporary. And then most standard on being constructed within thirty feet of the point of the property where it intersects the harbor line. No pier within three hundred feet of an existing pier. Location of the structure or use of the facility shall not conflict with applicable section of the Harbor Ordinance. No structures are allowed out there. Again, I mean, we say that I think three times in this. Filling is permitted beyond the officially established harbor line, except in connection with the pier or boat ramp. Or municipal pier or boat ramp, so that doesn't apply. So those are the sections other than the, you know, the standard zoning ordinance.
Right. Yeah, I'm looking at those. Mark, did the Harbor Committee discuss any issues with degradation to marine life?
We we did, yes. And you know, I think now would be the the time to like stress to the board members who are new at this that you know, this is a series of checks and balances. And just because the Harbor Committee reviewed it and and approved it with conditions. It's like, like I said, it's checks and balances. So we re review it and and look at everything as well.
Yeah, I was just curious if you had any insight on or any thoughts on the on the degradation of marine life, if that was discussed at your.
Yeah, they, no, the Harbor Committee felt that there was no impact on marine life there.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah. So do they have like a different set of criteria than we have for the Harbor Ordinance versus the zoning ordinance? Is there, are they? Are they a different set of criteria or they exactly the same?
For the most part, they're exactly the same. And I think what point, I think Mark's point is, is a good valid point that you know, the Harbor Committee weighed in, like more get way in. Some of the standards are are different. I will say, we're reading office and I don't have the Harbor Ordinance right in front, but reading the zoning ordinance. I think Harbor Ordinance focuses a little more on impacts to, you know, kind of the boating and recreational.
Okay.
Or marine life, yes. And and I I do have the Harbor Ordinance in front of me if anybody has any questions.
Perfect. I will, I will say I did. There is a comment in the chat. Allison McKeller had joined. Please consider that these peers have a significant impact on people kayaking. And I do think the Harbor Committee touched on that a little bit. And that she did say that they have to go around these peers depending on the tide. And I will say, remember, I mean, it's all all very good information and points, but we we criteria and just when you review this, make sure you review it per the criteria that you have. Again, there are other checks and balances on this thing too.
And with that, Will, can you scroll down to the your overview? Yeah, right there. Let's see, up up a little more so we get the side view.
There we go.
So you see where low tide is there?
Low tide is right here.
Right. So at low tide, it's really got very little impact on kayaking in that area.
Yeah, low tide hits ground right about here.
Yeah. Right.
So are you saying it was it's got like a fifty foot of impact? Is that in essence what you're saying, Mark?
Well.
I'm just asking the question for kind of clarification of what your point is.
Probably looking at, I mean, the ramp there is thirty eight feet and the float itself is twelve feet. So that's probably what, three quarters of the ramp? So maybe you'd call it twenty eight, twenty eight feet and twelve feet for the float. So that's forty feet.
Yeah.
You agree with that? Well?
Yeah, that's about right.
I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead.
Are you, your, my question was somewhat addressed in a mention that you made, Jeremy, about, you said that it can't be within three hundred feet of another pier. Is that correct? So I'm looking at the map here and there is a another dwelling.
Can you go up to the aerial or the site, maybe?
There's a dwelling on lot one twenty four ninety one, which is the next one towards the inner heart, towards the
This one here?
Let's have a look at what you got here. Yeah. No, it kind of looks like this might be under the same ownership because there appears to be a driveway going from Harbor Road across the owner of the
Ground, there's an easement for that access.
Okay, so if I'm looking at the scales in the drawing correctly, it looks like this pier will be in such a location that that property owner will no longer be able to put a pier out because there's no part of their property within further than three hundred feet. Is that correct?
Um, I'd have to double check. Their frontage is one seventy four. The Rixon frontage is about three hundred. And we're a little, we're about midway probably. So there, it would be tight because we also have to meet a setback from the property line. So by the time you take that into account, you're right, it may be very difficult or not even feasible under the ordinance to put another pier to the north.
So if the, if this property in question, the applicant's property has three hundred feet of frontage, wouldn't it be more fair to future property owners of lot one twenty four ninety one to put it you know, like two hundred feet from that property line? So that they're they're not wiping out any future options for the next property owner.
Well, we do have to three hundred feet from the pier to the south. And but I I mean, I can certainly look to see if that's an option, but unfortunately, that's the kind of the way the ordinance is written. There's a lot of properties that have been boxed out by that three hundred foot.
Yeah, and there there appears to, looking at the aerial photograph of the, see if I can find. Yeah, and there there appears to uh, looking at the aerial photograph of the, let's see if I can find it here. Of that area, it looks like the property to the south of Harbor Road does have a pier on it.
It does.
Uh, and you're saying that the pier you're putting in is 300 feet from that?
It's three about 325.
So, I mean, you know, it seems to me that if we're looking at sort of the big picture here um, that that should be taken into consideration.
Excuse me.
Yes, Katie.
I believe that Mr. Rixon just bought that property, didn't he?
The adjacent one?
Yeah, I think so. He just bought an abutting property and it's not the one with the pier on it. And I think that that's the the one it was.
That um, when I look at changes um, that happen in Camden or that are being discussed as being as to be permitted, I think beyond the present owner to uh, an owner 100 years from now or whatever. Just um, I I I think the present ownership is uh, should not be considered the permanent status.
Um, I'll have to look at this one. That looks like a small lot there. Um, I don't, or I'd have to look at everything. I mean, if they um, it may be a grandfather nonconformity, but if they buy it um, and it it very well could end up for zoning purposes.
Merging.
Merge um, into the lot. So they may never be able to split.
That was.
I would say their comment, and I think it's pertinent right now. Um, again, this is from Allison. Um, uh, Anita's comments and I appreciate it. Um, but I think Allison wanted to comment that Harbor Road um, that comes down. Um, this is town access. We have a town access point at the end of Harbor Road. Um, and so she it she says it's it's conceivable that the town may want to have its own pier there someday. The use of the harbor as a public resource has definitely impacted in a negative way by these massive peers, reducing the number of total moorings we can have is also a concern. She mentioned several years ago, the Harbor Committee recommended prohibiting any new peers in the outer harbor. The Select Board voted 3 to 2 not to advance it to voters. I believe, but there were many public comments that supported prohibiting any new peers. Um, so that.
Yeah, and I I appreciate those those comments. The the issue here is the planning board is that peers are still allowed.
Right.
And.
Precisely, Ethan, yeah.
Right, uh, so.
And 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 you know, I I'll be I'll be frank. I'm not a fan of these peers on private property. Um, but they're in the code and uh, or in the ordinance. And if action wasn't taken to remove the permission, the permissible use, then um, we don't really have a a means to prevent it on that on those grounds and.
Right, yeah, I'm gonna, I agree with that.
So if that's something that the, you know, if the planning board or select board is um, opposed to these new peers, that's something that needs to be addressed through an ordinance change and then through the voters. Um, because right now, the the applicant is operating under the current existing ordinance. And so I'm going to be pretty firm on sticking with that. Um, I'm not looking for some sort of end around to make to prevent a project that is, you know, permissible. Uh, despite my own public views on it.
Right. From my point of view, the um, the Harbor Road access um is great. I I'm not clear that this uh, pier would would cause any problem with that access. And certainly if somebody wants to launch a kayak, um, it would make a lot more sense to do that from a steamboat landing.
And Chris, so you wanted to say something?
Uh, well, I was just sort of along the lines. I mean, yeah, it's a lot of hypotheticals that are being thrown around right now that are nice to think about, but they don't really relate. Um, I did have a, um, it's nice to see just for the there's a little sidebar on the PDF that we were sent. Both the tax map and this aerial photo are kind of cut off.
That's right.
So um, it's helpful to see these. And I I went and looked found it on the tax map, but in what we got sent, we don't actually see this property on the tax map in the PDF.
Hmm. I'm not sure why that happened. I'm I'm doing I'm doing this up.
It's something about the 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 landscape versus portrait. I'm just pointing that out.
I think that happened. Um, I think you've looked at um, Janice's um, agenda that she sent out packet would be my guess because I've noticed this happening. I don't, I think it's a conversion.
Yeah, it's a it's a landscape.
Yeah, okay, I'll I'll make sure because Will's Will did have this information similar to this. So
Yeah.
Uh, if you look at the prior version that you got, I think it's there.
Yeah, no, I found it on that one. I'm just saying like that we're all looking at the same.
All right.
Um, I did have a quick question about the since you guys, since Harbor Committee got rid of the pilings on the float itself. On your diagram, it shows that it's um, secured on the front. I assume that those two moorings that you're proposed are attachments for the float. Is there another attachment for the float being proposed?
Yes.
Since the pilings are gone.
The two moorings which are forward of it and then chains going back to the granite.
To the pier, okay.
Here.
And do we have anything in our in? I didn't see anything about float storage. Um, like winter storage of floats? And is there any environmental component of that of where like if that float is sitting on the on their shore for six months?
Um, I can tell you that that won't be happening there. It wouldn't survive. The the shoreline is very.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, it's very bouldery.
Yeah.
Um, so the plan is to to bring the gangway up onto the pier and have someone remove the float and store it offsite.
Okay.
Which is pretty much what everybody in the.
Most of them do right now.
Yeah.
For clarification purposes, I did kind of skimmed over something here. Um, you do have in the review, in the shoreline review section. Um, and it has to do with the harbor ordinance. It does say um, that the location of the structure or the use of the facility shall not conflict with the applicable section of the harbor rules and regulations of the town of Camden. So as I read that, um, you guys get to weigh in on, for the most part, the exact same criteria that the Harbor Committee weighed in on. Um, so that's where impacts to recreational boat and those kinds of things is located. So what I'll do um, after this meeting is I will send you um, in essence, a shortcut to these applicable sections um, so that you all can have them. Um, and we can go, um, you have them already. I don't think you have the harbor ordinance, um, but you do have the zoning ordinance. All these things are available on the town's website. By the way, um, but I can send you specific sections so you don't have to find your way. Um, I'll do that um, tomorrow. Um, and just keep that in mind. And I think what Will will do always does is what you know, these consultants do is they address the standards or the approval criteria from their perspective because the burden is on them to prove to you that they meet these standards. So um, we'll just do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and Anita, just hold on one second. I'd like to just ask Mark if the um, when when the Harbor Committee was discussing this, um, you talked about uh, Steve being willing to, you know, sort of look at the moorings if any were affected and um, and possibly relocating them. I know uh, mooring space is tight in the harbor. Um, was it the understanding of the or the opinion of the of the Harbor Committee that there were going to be uh, moorings affected or a loss of mooring space? Because this is a pretty shallow water for the most part, right?
Yeah, correct. It's shallow water and it was, it was more the opinion of the harbor master and he was going to uh, look at it further. And if there were moorings that would be affected, he was going to contact those owners, make them aware of what was going on and uh, advise them that they were uh, uh, able to come and comment publicly on this.
Yeah, and and so I'm I'm worried less about the impact on individual mooring owners as to more so on just a loss of mooring space. Um, you know, if somebody gets a mooring moved to another spot, not a huge deal um, to me, but um, but if we're if we're losing, say, the potential for four moorings because of this project, I would want to know that.
Yeah, well, at low tide, that's that's for uh, less than four feet of water.
And you have that big patch of eel grass right there. There's not a lot of mooring field in that.
No, there is.
Okay.
Um, I can have Steve Pixley, I mean, you know, if you guys want him at the next meeting, I can probably see as harbor master. I mean, I can't answer these questions and I think
Right.
certainly being on the Harbor Committee. But if you want the harbor master to at least chime in, or I can get him questions from the board if Will thinks.
Yeah, I mean, I I that I think that's the 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 primary question that I would have for him is um, impact on moorings already in existence and any reduction in overall mooring uh, space. If he wants to come, that's fine, but he can certainly do that in a in a memo.
Mm-hmm. All right.
And I I would just like to uh, address Anita's concern about the 300 foot um, distance between peers. And if if we're looking at this pier and how it affects the property next to it. Well, if we were to move this over a little bit to allow them to have a pier, then it would affect the property next to them. So it just what it does is it really creates a snowball effect. If follow, you understand what I'm saying there? Yes, no?
I I understand what you're saying. You're basically saying that if you move it one direction, you affect one side and move it the other, you affect another.
My my understanding is that they can't um, they can't go beyond Marine Avenue anyway, which is right about where that next property is, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, once you get to the north of that, there's not much.
Well, there and no peers are allowed beyond that point.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying is is I'm not sure that that uh, domino effect is in effect for for there.
Well, it's an effect for that property that there's, there is one other property south of Marine Ave.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and Will, can I ask you, what would be the shortest length of the pier that would uh, serve the use that would be feasible? Well, I mean, that's that's what we look at almost every time. I mean, there's no we're always looking to try to get to a minimum amount of water that'll make the float be a safe situation at extreme low tide. Um, I mean, it costs more to build a bigger and longer pier. So for that reason, we try to minimize it. But the DEP and the Army Corps, that's their focus is to make sure we haven't built this any longer than it has to be. I just had a discussion with the DEP this week, um, wanting me to move a float 20 feet to gain three tenths of a foot. Um, it seemed crazy, but that was that's the extreme we we go to. So the reason that we have this at the height that it's at or at the length that it's at. Um, because under the ordinance, we could have pushed it a little further. I I'd mentioned that the length is under the 100 feet and we're not out to mean low water with the permanent structure. Um, but we we didn't feel we needed to, so we didn't. Um, but we didn't want to go any shorter because it is a bouldery area there. And at mean low water, we have 3.9 feet. That's but that's not to the underside of the flotation. The flotation sits under the water 12 to 18 inches. So so we really only have about three feet. And you know, if you get any wave action in there at low water, you're going to be hitting on the bottom. And it's going to end up damaging the float and it's not good for environmental reasons either. So that was kind of what dictated the location and the final length of this is picking up uh, water depth that because it's not all that uncommon to get extreme low tides that are put put in the half lower.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Than mean low water, which at that point, we're we're not going to have much water at all. Um, so that's that's how we got there, Ethan, is. Yep. What's a safe to keep that? Not to say there isn't places where floats ground out, um, but typically you do that when you've got a more muddy bottom and it's not going to damage the float as much. This is a pretty cobbly location until you get out to the eel grass. Yep. But again, we we wanted to avoid the eel grass also, and we also wanted to try to keep the moorings out of the eel grass. The other thing about keeping it back where we have it is is boats will be able to be at the flow uh, without impacting the eel grass. And what about um, the shoreline itself? Do you said it's, uh, you, I can't remember if you said it was bouldery. Is that the shoreline? Are you talking about the bottom? No, the the uh, I'll I'll include some photos in the uh, next submission, but the um, uh, the the closer you get to shore, the larger the boulders are. There's some really large rocks like three to four inch diameter stones along the shore. And then as you go out, um, those get smaller, but it's definitely bouldery, you know, 12 inch diameter rocks all over the, very difficult shore to walk on. Um, the slope itself is actually vegetated. That somebody's put some riprap in there. We're actually thinking about removing some of that. There's a lot of invasive species on that slope. We're working with a landscape architect to see if we can get a lot of the knotweed or what people call bamboo off of there. It's really taken over on that slope. And try to get some better vegetation growing there. Um, but that's what. So your 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 goal is in disturbing any vegetation, it will be to improve it? Yeah, there's probably, there's going to be a plan that's going to be proposed. Um, I don't think that comes to the planning board. Actually, it'll probably just go to Jeremy, although anything we do on that slope needs to go to the DEP. But we are working with the landscape architect to figure out a way to get rid of a lot of the invasive species and get some new plantings on there. And will there be any stabilization of the shoreline itself required? There's a um, there's a retaining wall um, that starts right here and goes all the way to this point. Um, that wall is old and not in great shape. So there is some discussion about replacing that. And there may be a little bit of um, stabilization along the toe of the slope. We're still working with, like I said, the landscape architect to figure out how much of this, the owners don't want rock, so we're trying to minimize that. But there may be some. That would be a separate permitting process. Okay.
Ethan, I think Pat had a question.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Oh, thank you.
Um, there's the supplemental information, section four, and it sounds like some of these points we've just been talking about because that part um, talks about for new peers. Uh, there's erosion control plans and the EPA, et cetera, documents. So is that um, at a later date, Will, is that when that information would come forth? Is that what you've been saying basically?
Yeah, when we make our final submission, we'll address all of these and give a little more detail on how these things are being met. But as far as the 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 construction of this will be by water. So Prok Marine is likely going to be the contractor to build this. They build all of the structure offsite and bring it by barge. They set the granite and then set the the pier on top of it. So there's not a lot of access from land or um, work or soil disturbance on the land. For for this pier, other than the set of stairs that, you know, there's going to have to be some posts put in, but really minimal soil disturbance here.
Okay. And I know I wondered about this earlier. Um, I wasn't sure if it came into play or or not. And I saw Allison had made the comment on sea level rise. Um, is that a factor at all from what you guys have looked at?
Well, your ordinance is pretty restrictive. Um, we don't have much flexibility with regards to what elevation this is constructed at. So I've got it as high as it it can be according to the ordinance.
Oh.
Can you make it high? Here's a question from Allison. Can you make it high enough that people can paddle under it at a high tide?
Now, without a change to the ordinance.
Right.
You've got 6 feet at mean line at mean high tide, which is pretty substantial, really.
Okay, question?
Go ahead, Anita.
Um, I there are two uh, quite different questions that I'd like to ask. One is um, to address Allison's um, clear concern. I want the planning board to to, you know, say whether this is, whether paddling under a pier is really something um, that we need to look out for. I'm I'm a paddler myself and I don't understand why I wouldn't be able to just paddle around this um, object. So I I I wanted to see what the planning board had to say about the issue. had to say about the issue in general. I think it's our responsibility to be looking at issues that affect the entire community and not just the property owner and that property. So that is important to consider. I'm not sure um how paddling under a pier uh relates to this, but I just wanted to have you weigh in on that. And then after that, I have another unrelated question.
Well, for my part, Anita, I share your perspective that it, I'm not, it's not quite clear to me how paddling around it is all that uh burdensome. But, you know, I get any object, if you want to, if you want to be paddling along the shore, any object you have to go around is going to be a, it's, it's a, an obstacle. I get it. Um, but I would, i- if I, if I had, um, you know, we have a, we, we have a a public hearing coming up. If we have, you know, twenty paddlers show up and say, yeah, it's really terrible to have to paddle around these piers. That would be something I'm more likely to consider. Um, I haven't heard any comments other than the ones, you know, posted by Allison, and it doesn't square with my um experience paddling. Um, but I haven't done a lot of paddling in the harbor. I tend to be on more on the lake. So um, you know, I'm sensitive to the issue as far as um making sure that it's available for recreation purposes and that we don't do anything to um really hinder that. Um, but I, I am, you know, not really convinced that, that paddling around a pier is a, is a great burden.
Can I, I appreciate that. And then Allison has her hand up. Before I go there, Allison, um, I'm gonna just, just going to the harbor ordinance because the section does say um you've got to find that they don't conflict with, you know, that this proposal doesn't conflict with those sections first. So it does again have those numerical requirements, three hundred feet, six feet into height, and the width can only be such max that they meet, clearly meet all those standards. But so the outer harbor, this is for piers. Um, and this is what the harbor committee reviews, asked as a select board, now you do as well, um, by reference, says the proposed hu, project, and I'll get these to you, will not A interfere with or pose a hazard to the navigational channels between the inner harbor and the bay from the public vessel ramp to the main channel. B substantially eliminate or interfere with existing and designated mooring and anchorage areas and access there too. I will say at the select or at the harbor committee, they taught, they said it didn't substantially um, in, impact moorings, but they wanted Steve to provide notice like um, like Mark said. C was substantially reduce or interfere with existing shellfish and clamming areas and access there too. D is interfere with public vessel launching and pier facilities. E is substantially block or interfere with public rights of passage and uses of the shores and flats. F is adversely affect small recreational boating activities to a substantial degree. And again, this is where the standards, you know, the, it's important to read what word, hey? It says to a substantial degree. So when you review it, you're going to be determining, looking at that, what that means. Um, construction of approved projects shall commence within a year. The decision of the select board concerning issuance or denial uh may be appealed to Superior Court. So the rest of those two standards are really um operational stuff and not review criteria. But those are the criteria that you will also review them, this project under, and I'll forward that off to you all. Uh, again, that's the same stuff that the harbor committee reviewed and the select board will review. And I guess that's meant to Mark's comments about checks and balances.
Thanks, thanks, Jeremy. And Allison, if you'd like to chime in, um, you had your hand up.
Um, yeah, thanks. Um, thanks, Ethan. And I haven't had a chance to look at this really carefully. Um, I appreciate that there's a pre-application meeting and, you know, that allows everybody to kind of try to wrap their head around it. Um, so I don't have a, a really an opinion necessarily yet on, on this particular pier. It's just that um I think i- in, in general, sure, yeah, you can go around um the piers, especially when the, the objective paddling is just to get from point A to point B. Um, what the experience that I've had a lot is just being out there trying to get to Sherman's Cove um with kids oftentimes and where the objective is just to kind of be checking things out, um, to be going along the shoreline. Maybe the kids are fishing or you're just looking for wildlife. Um, it's not just, you know, getting somewhere necessarily and um, when it starts to get a little bit windy or um, you know, you're, you are trying to get back in a hurry, having to go um like around the piers, it can, it's, it's something that you can be blown into, I guess, um, is the, is the scary part a little bit. Whereas when you don't have the piers there, you can just kind of stay close to shore and um meander along and not feel like there's going to be a, a big issue. Um, it basically just, you know, doesn't allow you to, to do that anymore. You have to be in really deep water. Um, so it's just, you know, go away. It, it changes the experience. Um, because if you want to, you know, get near the shore at all, you just have to be sort of going in and out. And I would just encourage everybody to try to think about, a lot of this comes in in terms of like, what do you consider to be substantial? And um a lot of the time, I, I don't, I mean, we do have a public access point at, at Harbor Road. And so just because the town has kind of ignored that over the years um and not made that a priority doesn't mean that we are not going to want to do that in the future. And so if we were going to be using that public access point, for example, to the um, you know, highest level possible, then it, it might start to, to interfere with that. So, uh, you know, just trying to take a, a little bit harder look at it from a, from a few different perspectives. So I can see that you guys are doing that and, and thank you and um I uh look forward to learning more.
Thanks, Allison.
I would have to agree with uh what Allison said about paddling. I mean, I kayak, but i- unless you're experienced and you want to go around the harbor or something, you want to be able to stay close to shore in most cases. I mean, if you're a more advanced kayaker yet, you want to be out further and stuff. So I can certainly see what she's saying from that perspective, because I would probably be thinking the same thing. And it's true about the wind, the waves, it just gets, even though it might not look like it's that far out, it could get intimidating from my experience.
Yeah, I'm curious, Pat. I'm, I'm curious whether, you know, um, uh, and there are a lot of similar piers around the harbor, right? Whether, you know, people actually go between the granite piles and under the pier, whether there's enough headroom there or not.
There could be, I guess.
There's Ethan, is there any comment on that?
Yeah, both, go ahead.
So at hi, at high water, which is, this is mean high water, there's three feet under the structure to mean high water. So
Three, three feet.
Three feet.
Yeah.
And then this is low water down here. So at mid tide, you're going to have, you know, two or three feet more. I would say anything below mid tide, though, you're not going to have enough water to go between the two granites. So you've probably got mid tide to high tide to go between the two and under. Um, there's a lot of big boulders in this area too. So I think the pictures will, will help you see that it's a little bit of a sketchy area to be in if there's not much water anyway, but I, I have seen people on the other side of the harbor, the um Reed Pier and the Pasari Pier um go underneath when the tide was right.
Hmm.
As Ethan said, at, at low water, you'd have to go out around an extra forty feet away to get around that float.
Hmm.
And how many, how many piers are between uh in existence now between steamboat landing and say Sherman's Cove?
I think this would be the fourth.
Uh, look, looking at, and now this is the third.
This would be the third?
Yeah, there's, there's Steamboat Pier, there's one at the end of Eaton Ave. I'm looking at the, a bigger aerial photo. There's the one in the adjacent property. There's one at the end of Eaton Ave, and that's, and then Steamboat Landing, like that's it.
Okay.
That was the point I was going to try and make is there's, like, I hear the point that Al, Allison's making and about kayaking, but you know, it's not that many piers over there, and it is also a working harbor. Like, there's a lot of things that you have to go around when you're kayaking in a harbor, like.
So, so I might suggest that uh, uh, before we get too deep into this issue, that maybe if we uh, if we're going to do a site walk here, we might do it at uh low tide.
Are you proposing a site walk on your boat?
January?
No.
That's too bad. Um, yeah, that's a good idea, though. I think low tide would, would be more informative for sure.
Yeah, it definitely is.
You guys, what's your schedule on this?
What's that?
What's your schedule on this?
Um, you know, they're hoping to have permits in place so that they can construct it this spring or summer.
Uh huh.
And whether or not they can actually get the materials and get a contractor there to do it is another thing, but that's, that's their goal.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, I'm just, I'm just thinking about, you know, scheduling and getting out there for a site visit and making sure we've got time to do it all and.
I see your hand, Anita. Go ahead.
Sorry, did Jeremy, Jeremy finish?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Um, yeah, A- Allison pointed out that if, when it's low tide, you can get under it. When it's high tide, you can't get under it. I think that's what the concern was, unless I'm mistaken.
I think you, I think you are mistaken. Um, I think it is between mid and high, you can go under it. But at low, it's going to drop down to a point where you can't. Is that correct, Will?
The water level.
There's, there's no water.
Right, yeah, it's going to drop.
Water, yeah, low water.
So my my question, I, I'm still thinking about um impact for the next two properties to the north uh on the way to Marine Avenue. So I want to ask a few questions related to that. For one thing, um, is there public access from Marine Avenue to the, the harbor?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I think it was about fifteen, twenty years ago, the, the town put a nice set of stairs in there.
Okay, so we've got, we've got stairs, um, and perhaps there could be a potential for a, a pier that the public might want to put in at some point. I'm not sure.
At Marine Ave?
Yep.
Uh, I think it would be difficult. There's even less water. I mean, the further.
I think Allison, I mean, potentially at Harbor.
You, pardon, you said that, you said that.
I think it's accurate to say there's not enough.
Marine Avenue.
I think there's not enough water at Marine, right? Um, and we're getting into sensitive areas. I mean, you can't build them past Marine. I would suggest the town.
Okay, so if we can look at, i- if we can look at those two properties south of Marine Avenue and north of the um property in question. You mentioned that the property just to the north of the property in question has been purchased by that same, the same property owner.
Um, that may have been not true, we don't know.
Yeah, um, so is there any potential for uh and you also mentioned that the retaining wall is in bad shape and is going to be removed. Um, that's kind of, there's a, there's a drive or I guess there's a driveway, perhaps it comes down on that north side of the property. What might be the potential of asking that property owner, how about sharing the dock that is to be built with the property to the north that, that property owner presently owns, but that could become an easement to that property, and that resolves the issue of the three hundred feet that you're concerned about from the property to the south. And it provides access for the property to the north that is presently owned apparently by this property.
Yeah, I, I, Nina, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I feel like that's a, a valid concern insofar as, in general, we want to make sure we don't negatively impact someone's property rights. But at the same time, you know, the ordinance permits this type of structure and the other property owner has not applied for a permit, um, which they are free to do so as well. And so there's sort of a, a first in time, you know, type of situation here, but you know, if, if the other owner, if it is a different owner, wants to have a pier and wants to share it or wants to have an easement, that's an, an issue for private parties.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and, and as far as, you know, Allison's chiming in again with the town, the town hasn't taken any action on these, on these things either. And um the, the prospect of a town maybe wanting to someday in the future do something, isn't enough for me to deny a permit to somebody who's, you know, following the ordinance.
Well, I'm not, I'm not proposing that we deny a permit. What I'm proposing is that we look at future potential for the community and nudge the very nicely designed, and I see nothing wrong with their design at all, uh, but nudge it one way or the other in order to um, to take care of those future potentials, so that we are taking into consideration our community and its future and the people living.
I, I just, I just don't think it's feasible.
Are rare.
I just don't think it's feasible to force the owner of the current property to offer to share their pier with their neighbors. Um, it's, it's in a, in a, in an ideal world, that would be great, and maybe they can. But it's certain, I don't think it's something that we can do as the planning board. Now, whether it's something we should consider in approving or denying a permit, you can, you can make that case and people will land where they will on that. But the idea that we're going to um sort of force a marriage between two property owners to share a, to share a pier when we don't even know that they want a pier, it just seems like we're getting too far afield of what was actually in front of us, which is an application for a pier uh under the ordinance that we have in front of us. And I want to stick, I want to stick to that.
Ethan, I agree with you completely on that.
Yeah.
But I, I'd also like to address the other issue about the uh town may wanting to uh uh put in a pier or access from their right of way. In the harbor ordinance, uh, there are two issues. It says no pier shall be constructed within thirty feet horizontal distance of the point where the property line intersects the harbor. And it also says the pier shall be built within three hundred feet of a measure as measured along the shoreline from existing from an existing or from an approval, approved pier. Okay, and it further states that municipal piers and this municipal launching ramp shall be exempt from four and five. So what that's telling us is if the town did want to do something there, uh, they're exempt. They, they can do it.
Yep, that's very helpful, Mark.
Well, that's, that is helpful. Um, it doesn't address uh uh the other property owners and I've made, I've already said my piece about that.
Okay, I think we've about wrung this rag dry. Does anybody else have anything else they want to ask uh in the pre-application process? The ideal thing here, we can talk about things uh ad nauseam, but um mostly it's whether we need anything from uh Will in the application is what I'm most concerned about. If there's something we want to see provided.
Exactly. Ethan, I think y- your, your point is well taken. This is a pre-app meeting. It's not really a a discussion for these nitty gritty details that we're getting into.
Right, I have a question, Ethan. So from a process point of view, um, if there is supplemental information the planning board requires or, or, you know, requests, uh, when is the time that we ask for that? At the actual application or now?
Well, I mean, no, we can, we could ask for it now. Um, if there's something that you want to see, like for instance, um, just as a, as an example, even though it's not directly asked of Will, I ask specifically that, that uh Steve Pixley, the harbor master, provide uh information, solid information on effect on other moorings. Um, that's something we can ask for. Um, you know, you can ask for uh more information on erosion control. You can ask for, you know, anything that's under the ordinance, you can ask for if you feel like it's pertinent to this application. And you could ask for it now, which gives early endorsement longer, you know, more time to, to come up with the answer and, and provide those answers. We can ask for it at the site walk, you know, uh, you know, visit and um, you know, hope, sometimes we usually try to set, set those at least enough days in advance of the actual hearing so that if we do ask for something, if something comes up, that they can, they have enough time to provide it. Um, it can be uh, you know, Um, it can be, uh, you know, we can continue a hearing on the actual application until it's provided. It, it, there's, there's a number of ways it can happen. Obviously, our goal is to make it as smooth as possible, and so the sooner we ask for it, if we think we're gonna need it, um, the better.
Right, understood. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Jeremy?
Um, I just, I'm just getting back to again the criteria that you review under and Will needs to provide good evidence and you need to like find that evidence valid and, and he meets the, so I'm just, I don't know, I'm not a, you know, I'm not someone that can provide any guidance on that the proposed use, just looking at the special criteria that was brought up. You know, that causing degradation to marine life in, in or near the area, I think that's something that you may want to ask Will for information on. Like how, how do they prove that it's not going to have a significant adverse impact on marine life? Um, I mean, you have to make that call. So how you do that, it's based on information and I want to make sure
Right.
Will gives you good information that you can act on.
Right, and, and Jeremy, thank you for that because you kind of, you kind of uh took what I was going to say and then that is that, um, you know, Will, in the past, you've done um applications where you actually list out for us the, the criteria that you think apply and your judgment is usually on point. And then it, it allows us to focus on the evidence that you're supporting the application with. And I would suggest that the more, the, the more thorough that application is and to those points, the less likely there is a chance of delay or denial of a permit, you know, and so it just makes our job easier. We don't want to have to, you know, table it and send you back and, and make you come back again. But if we feel like there's information we don't have that we didn't realize we needed, um, we will ask for it. And so the more you provide, the better. Yep, that would be great.
I plan to go through all the, all the criteria and provide a response and hopefully it'll be, it'll meet your approval, but if it doesn't, then I understand we can be asked to provide more.
Great. Does anybody else have anything on this?
I'm wondering if Will would be willing to discuss with the property owner the issue that is, I, that I brought up regarding the three hundred feet and see whether there is any potential, even though what they've done is within the regulations that to, to consider other property owners and see whether there's something they can do that would uh minimize the impact on future property owners' desires.
So I've got two, two, couple of comments on that, Anita. I think there's two more properties between this property and Marine Avenue. And so there's no way that both under the ordinance could have a pier. And so if I adjust this or, or find out that the property directly to the north could have one, then the next one definitely can't. If the next one can't, then there's probably enough space for the last one to possibly have it. So that three hundred foot, ultimately, the town has decided to eliminate properties. I mean, it's definitely been a first come, first served. I know on the other side of the harbor, there's some unhappy people when they found out that the neighbor got theirs first and that they didn't have three hundred feet and they were eliminated. So the other thing I would say is that it, from our, our office, sharing doesn't seem to work that well. We get involved from situations where people are supposed to be sharing all the time in legal battles and trying to prove who owns what. And I would never recommend somebody do this with somebody they don't know. It's, it just, it gets, it gets into a really difficult situation because you've got to provide access onto your property then there becomes liability issues and maintenance issues and who's paying for what, who damages what. It just gets really complicated legally, so.
And, and by far and away, I back that up. The, the most volatile lawsuits I've been involved in as an attorney are between neighbors.
Yeah.
It, it, yes, it just gets, it gets primal.
I, I would pay Will and Ethan on that also.
Yeah, but I can certainly look quickly, Anita, to see if the north, the property directly to the north has been boxed out. I, I actually think the one closest to Marine Avenue doesn't have enough water anyway. I think that you, they couldn't build one because they just never get there. Um, but the one directly to the north, there may be a possibility water depth wise, so I can take a look at what there is for dimensions there and see if it's, if it's feasible.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And, and, and if they are butters and they are, they are then, you know, invited to the hearing um to make their case, you know. So that, that's, that's another issue. If they are concerned, um, okay, I'd like to wrap up this portion of the hearing or the, the pre-application meeting. Um, unless there's any additional public comment you have out there, Jeremy?
No, I mean, I think everyone's followed along with Alison's comments, correct?
Yeah, and anyone else uh on the board have anything they need, they need to get off their chest on this one? Go ahead, Krista.
Um, I was just gonna say that, Will, you mentioned that you were gonna put the lighting in the prop, and I would just ask if you could also put something, a mention about the float storage.
Oh, sure.
Um, just as that environmental impact piece, just to clarify that.
How about a little, how about a little note on the plan that says you're gonna comply with every applicable um rule? Sorry.
Forever and always.
So, so the other request we have is a statement from the harbor master pertaining to moorings.
Correct.
And uh then there's the issue about a uh sidewalk.
Oh, right.
Yep, thanks, Mark. And Will, just real quick, so I can, you know, as much as I wanted to move on, uh, is it, as far as the construction, when you talk about the granite, you're, you're basically similar to when they place a moor, you're just dropping a giant chunk of granite onto the surface, right? You're not doing any drilling or?
Right, right.
And how big, how much do those pieces of granite weigh?
Um, I think a lot of times the, those blocks turn two tons.
Okay, so like twice the size of most moorings or more of a large mooring.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't take, you know, those, that granite weighs about a hundred and fifty pounds per cubic foot.
Yeah.
So, so it doesn't take a big block to get to between one and two tons. It wa, it weighs more than concrete. The concrete moorings aren't quite as heavy as the, as the granite.
Alright, okay, thank you. Uh, site plan, everybody, sidewalk, everybody. What, what uh? Do, do you have an idea, Will, when you're ready to go for the, for the full hearing?
I'm thinking that we would try to come um for the second meeting in January. Is that reasonable, Jeremy? From your perspective?
Yeah, that's much more reasonable than the sixth.
Yeah, no, I, I, I want, I need a little bit of time.
The twentieth of, of January.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Jeremy?
Yeah.
That's on the calendar right now?
Yeah.
So what does the board feel about a Monday sidewalk on the seventeenth of January? It promises to be a balmy day on the harbor.
Here's a question. Seventeenth is Martin Luther King Day.
Ah, okay.
And then just pointing out too, you may want to give Will a little more um time
Three days.
On um to some concerns that you guys may have. I mean, that only gives, the ordinance is funny because something came up on the Mount Batty thing. Um, any revised plans that I get have to be submitted, can't be submitted any later than ten days before the planning board meeting. Um, so it's a squirrely, um, it's something I'd like to change in our ordinance because if you guys do a site visit on the seventeenth and he submits new plans based on some, as you wanted, all of a sudden, um, you know.
Are those uh, are those the business days or, or just calendar days?
Calendar days.
Okay, so if we did something on the tenth? The, the week prior, I cannot promise a balmy day on January tenth. Sorry, folks.
Just FYI, low tide is at eleven thirteen on the tenth.
I'm out of town from the sixth, uh for the sixth meeting and I won't be returning until the uh fourteenth.
Can you zoom in, Anita? I could try to zoom in on my cell phone uh with you. I mean, it's a meeting.
Really? Can that work for a site visit?
I don't mind.
It can, it might be a little, it might be a little quirky as far as the, the, the connection, but um, it, it can work.
Jeremy, is, is it out of line to, to visit the site independently? I mean, I'd be happy to do it on a day that.
I, now, keep in mind, I mean, it's just to look at the site and you're not supposed to discuss much, right? So it's really, the board looks at it and I think it's not out of line if the board agrees to say, hey, Will, can you, and you and Anita meet up together. Will, you give me a statement, what you guys discussed and Anita concur to that. Um, and you can enter that is, and you know, enter that into um the record at the hearing that Anita did do a site visit, the same exact information was discussed.
Um, you know, we, we have two very confident alternates too.
Yeah. Either way, I think it's appropriate if we do it, you know, in a good way, you know, appropriately, so.
Okay, what time would that be on the tenth?
Eleven thirty.
We're looking around eleven thirty for high tide or low tide.
Low tide.
I, I think I'm actually traveling on the tenth.
But you can zoom in too.
But it'll be in the air, though. Think, I'm just pulling it up right now.
And Jeremy, I don't know. I'm not sure if we're going away yet or not, but I may not be here either. So I mean, but I guess you must have enough people.
Well, we are short one planning board member, so um the more of you that depart, the um, you know, I think we need four vote, four members to vote, I think.
Too, too many jet setters on the planning.
Did you say three?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good. I have a five P M flight, so I don't need to leave, you know, until, I, you know, right after the site.
Well, yeah. Let's.
We could do, I mean, we could certainly do it a little easier, earlier. It doesn't have to be exactly at low water. We could meet at quarter of eleven or eleven.
Even, even ten thirty.
I mean, even ten o'clock, I think, is close enough.
Yeah, if you're an hour or two before dead low, we'd see it.
Yeah, you're gonna get, you're gonna get a feel for it. I've been there at all tides and as long as it's close to low, within an hour or so, you'll, you'll be able to see what's going on.
So I would suggest ten o'clock on January tenth.
Ten on the tenth.
Ten, one, ten, twenty twenty-two.
Alright, super. And that will be advertised. It is a public meeting. People can join us. It's obviously gonna be a site visit, so it's not gonna be a public Zoom meeting remote for people, but I will zoom in. I'll get you guys, um, or at least Anita, I'll zoom with you on that meeting, so you can at least see what we're talking about.
And Jeremy, you're gonna get us a boat.
Yeah, no.
It's the best way to see it.
Yeah.
Now, wear your boots. We can do it in kayaks.
We could, we could kayak, yeah.
Actually, to be honest, I, I think.
Between the ice flows.
Stand up on the top of the bluff and look down at it. Um, that shoreline is treacherous. It's really, if, if it's cold at all and, and the wet rocks are slippery, it's treacherous in the summer, forget.
Let's, let's have Alison set us all up with kayaks.
And wetsuits.
Yeah.
There are dry suits, yeah.
Penguins, I want to see penguins.
Polar plunge.
Sounds good. Next one.
Okay, moving along on the agenda.
This would be one hundred Mount Batty. Again, this is Crane Port. Some little background on this one, the garage at, at Mount Batty around the bend there, bring, coming up back up to Washington Street. Uh, Mike Mullins owns that. He had this project approved, almost identical project approved. I think the only change is a little clar story on the top um that's proposed. Um, there are some minor tweaks to it, but this was approved by the board like two and a half years ago. There's a provision in the ordinance that says your approval expires um in two years if you don't build it. Um, and that's why they're back is to get this approved. Um, Will, um, you can start and go ahead. Um, there is a neighbor probably still on board, hopefully. Um, that is here, Sherry.
Jeremy, Jeremy, throw a quick question out there. I mean, the, the reason we're looking at this is because of the time delay. Is there, and I'm just wondering if there's, if there's any justification for the time delay and COVID and to accept it as a continuation.
Well, that's a good, good thought. I will say, I mean, the ordinance is, says what it says, so you kind of are bound to it. Um, I, I'm looking at tweaking the ordinance to allow staff or something for a one-year extension to that two years because you know, the reality of getting contractors on board and financing projects, et cetera, right now is like a long timeout. So I think as the ordinance changes, that impacts the um approval. I think getting a year extension is appropriate, but we don't have that provision, so I think we really need to just try to um, you got a new board and kind of use the same standards and I, you can put some deference to what the prior planning board did. Um, but it is a different board. I, I appreciate it, Mark. I, I wish we could just rubber stamp it, go. I mean, they need all of the zoning requirements. Um, there are some, they did revise the plan a little bit on the buffers um to ramp them up to meet our standards. Um, Will, you want to go from there? Does that make sense, Mark and Ethan?
Yeah, it does. And, and, and also I would just point out that we have some public comment on the, the, the stormwater and the, the, the the drainage. So I think that it's important that we, we at least hear those issues as well. So I want to make sure we give it a full hearing. Um, I am prepared to give some deference absolutely to the fact that it was already approved, but we've been able to go through these projects fairly expediently if we want to. And so I think, you know, we want to make sure we, we check all the boxes, but um, let's go ahead and have uh Will go.
And just from a process perspective, um, um, I, where was I going? Um, Will, you can keep going. Um, you can start and I'll, I'll, I'll get, get there. Go ahead.
Okay, sure, thank you. Um, so this was originally constructed by MBNA and they developed this corner. And the, they put a pretty extensive stormwater system in. So there's catch basins um throughout the parking lot and a lot of the catch basins that were put in are actually within the town um right of way. And are utilized to pick up town and road drainage too. So it was kind of a, a combined system, so it's not just um stormwater from this property. And at the time, this abutting property was all part of it. Um, and it outlets on the opposite side of the driveway that goes into that property. And I guess I'm understanding from comments that Jeremy got today that there's some erosion going on here. So um I haven't had a chance to go out there and look at it, but certainly will and will come up with a, a plan to make some adjustments to that um that we can share with the neighbor and, and with the board. So I'll just need a little bit of time to get out there and take a look at it, but I do understand that that needs to be done. Um, over on the closest to Mount, uh, well, at the corner, right now, the only parking there is there's a retaining wall where I'm showing my cursor. Everybody can see my screen still. So there's a retaining wall here now that um is high side is here, low side is here, and there's parking. Um, what they're proposing to do is to take that retaining wall out and put a new wall in here in order to expand parking. Um, the car the, the subtenant, sorry, the tenant that is in here repairs cars. You've probably seen them out there. They're just trying to get a little more orderly space for that and they also want to have a fenced in area right here so that um storage and materials can, can be inside of a fence and, and be a little better screened. Um, on this side of the property, the light shaded gray is the limit of the parking right now. And again, they're proposing to add a retaining wall here that set off the property line by about six, six or seven feet to give some room to put plantings on the downhill side and then uh just expand the parking and storage area that they have on site. Um, so that's the purpose of that wall. At the entrance, there's an island here that does a pretty good job of blocking the overhead door. Um, and so part of what they're trying to do is just reduce the size of this island in order to make this entrance a little easier to get deliveries and to get materials into the overhead doors that are along this face right here. This, the distance currently from here to that island is just too short for them to actually get box trucks or delivery trucks in to deliver. Um, I did show a forty foot by fifty foot area where a truck can pull up parallel and unload also. And I, I showed that because the ordinance specifically says that um, an industrial use should show an area that's forty, uh fourteen by fifty uh for unloading and I wanted to make sure that we could show that we're in compliance with that. Um, that's really the major site changes. Um, in order to deal with the drainage, we are adding another catch basin here that we're connecting the piping to this structure. Um, and direct all, everything there. There's some additional plantings. And direct all, everything there. There's some additional plantings along this side, along the road here. This area is all grass right now and it's gonna remain grass. It's gonna be regraded. Um, and they are proposing, I don't think he's done it yet, but we, we've included a fence permit, uh, application because he wants to put a fence here. There's a portion of this roof that is actually accessible from the ground. Um, the elevation as it climbs up the hill gets to a point where it's less than six feet and people could actually climb up there onto the roof, which is not a safe situation because on this side it's a pretty significant drop. So there has been a fence there and we're proposing to upgrade that and put a new one in. The clear story is just a matter of making the internal ducting and everything a little better and lifting that up and taking care of some roof drainage issues. So we're adding two feet to the clear story. I'm gonna make sure when we submit the final application, I get you a little more information on the existing height of the building to show you that we have the room to, to add that two feet without violating the, uh, height restriction. But we looked at that quite extensively, so I know we're, we're good. So that's really, that's it. It's really changing those two parking areas and, uh, adding two feet to the clear story.
Great, thanks, Will. And, and that fence, that's gonna be a cedar fence or wood fence?
Yes, yep. And I actually, I have details of all of the fences that are proposed, so those will be on the, if I didn't submit those already, I actually think, thought I did, but, um, we have details of all the fences.
You, you did. They're on, they're on plan C two and those look like, uh, metal fences.
Um, no, we've got them labeled here. Let's see here. Yeah, the, the one that's tight to the building to keep being able to go up onto the building, that's a cedar fence, it's six feet tall. We do have a fence here, um, along the backside of the wall. Trying to remember that one. That was a wood baluster fence, so that one's not even, uh, that's about forty-two inches high. Which is right here on the backside of that wall. That's just fall protection to make sure nobody, you know, walking from the street towards the property could fall on that, over that retaining wall.
Right, I see that now. That's on, on C four. And the chain, chain link fence is for, uh, down by the building for the storage area.
That's for the storage right here.
And then the, uh, cedar panel fence is, uh, up along the building there.
That starts right here, goes up along and turns the corner and matches an existing fence that's already there.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you, Will. Um, it's appropriate now to open the, uh, hearing for public comments.
Well, can I, really quick, Ethan, remember this isn't a public hearing, um, you're taking. We did notice this, um, as a public hearing, so it was noticed. Um, but then we ran into the, um, the new submissions that revised plans that came in um, too late to meet the ten-day period for the hearing, so what we're, they're gonna be refiling for the hearing. Um, and, um, but we did get notice to the abutters. And so Sherry is the abutter. She did send the email that I forwarded you off. I think it's prudent to be able to accept her comments for the record and then include them in the record for the public hearing, whether or not she'll be able to be with us at that time.
Right, right, yeah. I was gonna make sure that was clear, that, that, um, there is still going to be a public hearing and she's welcome to attend. Any of the abutters are, of course. Um, but because we noticed this hearing as a public hearing and it changed, um, I do think it's appropriate, so I will make a motion to, uh, accept the comments of the abutter um, as public comment. Um, and, um, and, and with the opportunity, of course, to, to speak further today and then also, um, to attend the, the, the actual hearing. So I need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, have a second, so roll call vote. So Anita, so thumbs up, yep, Pat.
Aye.
Aye. Andy.
Aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
And it's an eye from me. Okay, so, um, that does allow me then to, uh, open the uh, hearing to public comment. So Sherry, I see that you're here. Would you like to speak?
I just have a couple clarifying questions if I could ask.
Okay, can you first, um, say your name for the record and your, and your address?
Gail Sherry Fraser, ninety-six Mount Batty Street.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so there's a retaining wall next to the driveway and um, and I think there's also a fence on top of that retaining wall. Is that just one of the posts and chain fences, or is that something more significant?
Nope, that one is wood baluster. It's only forty-two inches high.
Okay. And, and the, the shrubberies are planted, um, on, on to, to the south of the, the retaining wall?
Yeah, Ethan, do you mind if I respond to all of these?
Oh, please, no, go ahead, Will. This is absolutely fine.
Okay, um, yeah, the plantings are between the property line and the retaining wall.
Okay, and can I, can I have any, um, input on what they could be?
I can certainly pass that request along to, uh, Michael and, uh, let him know.
And, and Sherry, I, I'm here as well, Marcy Anis. I am a project administrator for Crane Sport. I would love your input on the shrubbery and you're more than welcome to Popeye anytime. I'm there almost daily. Um, Popeye, anytime, I'd love to discuss any ideas you might have, especially in that department as I, I'm kind of at a loss.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Marcy.
So, and then, and then the other, um, ongoing issue that was, I brought up the last time this project was proposed was, um, the lighting. And I did read on the project that it said that lighting wasn't cons, being considered, but I wonder if, um, if just to bring it into compliance with the town ordinances, it might be.
Jeremy, do you wanna handle that? Uh, do you feel like there's a, a compliance issue at present?
Um, sure, I mean, I haven't gone out there to verify whether or not there is, but Sherry commented, I believe, the last time on this as well. Um, and I think I, I did talk to Will about this. Um, there is a provision that talks about light, glare, um, and you can't have stray or dazzling lights going beyond property, on um, property lines, so that's why we don't have a standard that talks about, um, you know, dark sky, dark sky compliant, but that generally ends up becoming one of your conditions on, on projects in the past. Um, you can ask for that. I mean, it's certainly making these things, um, you know, um, fully shielded and downlit is appropriate and not having lighting that is violating our ordinance. I had to resolve that anyway. You can do that now or I can work with the owner, uh, and Marcy to address it. Will said he was gonna, I think, try to address it as well, so.
Okay. And, and again, Sherry, I had, this is the first time I had heard the concerns on that. I'm sorry, I'm fairly new to the project. Um, we are happy to address that and if Jeremy wants to come by in the evening, early evening and, and let us know.
Okay.
Um, absolutely.
I, I submitted photographs last time this happened, but, um, and Mike did try to, um, you know, uh, mask off the lights to some extent, uh, the first time I talked to him about it, but he didn't really do enough to actually shield them, so you'll see there's still quite a bit of glare.
You might need a new fixture, Marcy.
Um, yeah, and that's okay. I was actually looking at them in the, this evening before I left and I was like, those aren't actually very attractive anyways, so uh, maybe that's just something that we, we talk about and, and fix as soon as we possibly can. Um, I'm sorry to hear that it's been bothering you. I know at home, if a light like that was flashing my windows, it would probably bother me as well.
Yeah, I have, I have a neighbor with a porch light that just drives me absolutely nuts. It destroys my view of the night sky.
Right, yeah, we wanna be as nice neighbors as possible, so.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, anything we can do to help.
Yep, and to that end, um, Sherry, from your comments, um, the one that actually struck me the most, I know the light can be, um, certainly bothersome, uh, was the stormwater runoff and, and, and the drainage. And so, Will, if you could just speak directly to that, what I, what I'm looking for is actually sort of a, a plan that makes things much better than it has been. Not necessarily just meeting what's required.
Right, understood. No, I plan to go out, take a look at, at the erosion that she mentioned and, uh, and, uh, I'll talk to David St. Laurent too, if there's anything that, uh, that needs to be coordinated with the town, so I'll, I'll definitely have a response and hopefully maybe even a, um, a design to improve that outlet.
Great.
And I'd like to comment on that really quickly too, because as I was arriving this evening, David St. Laurent was there, um, and they had tested the storm drains and I do, um, think that they had found some valuable information to report back, so definitely, uh, looking into that as well and they are on it, so that's great.
Yeah, Will and I, Will and I chatted about it, um, this afternoon before the meeting, so, uh, we'll make sure that's all.
Okay, okay, I wanna make sure that Sherry's had an opportunity to be heard on all of her points. Sherry, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
That's it, thank you. This is great.
Okay, thank, thanks for attending the meeting.
Okay.
And you're welcome to come to the next meeting too, if you, if you can stand it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Everyone.
All right, how does the board feel? Anybody on the board have any additional questions?
Yeah.
Oops, let, let's go with someone other than Anita first. Is that you, Chris O?
Um, yeah, I just was quickly, on the stormwater, I noticed, uh, Will, on the, on the plan, you have various sections that has existing drainage flow versus proposed drainage flow. How much do those already attenuate some of the issues? Particularly that, on that new parking section on the left side of the property.
Um, are you talking about the arrows?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, I think that the biggest problem that the neighbor is having is actually at the outlet of the pipe, which is right here. So all of that stormwater, um, on the property is getting collected in that piping system um, along with road, road water from Mount Batty and, and some of the other water that runs on to Mount Batty Street and ends up in this system. And so it's all getting outlet down here into, you know, a, um, stone apron. But again, that stone apron was constructed over twenty years ago and likely hasn't had a lot of maintenance or upkeep. So I think that, uh, like I said, I, I really wanna look at it, see what the, the condition is. We may need to change that to a plunge pool or, or something a little, a little different, um, if it's, if it's causing problems. Ultimately, that water ends up getting right back into the ditch line and into the river down below, so we certainly don't wanna be having erosion happening as it comes out of that pipe. Um, but I, I will definitely get out there and take a look at it and, and come up with something.
Okay, great.
Something better.
Thank you.
I mean, otherwise, back to your comments, we're, we're not really changing the flows all that much, I mean, um, you know, we are in this parking lot trying to catch the water so it doesn't run out into the street and get it into this pipe system. Um, over here, it's kind of the same thing. It's the water that's gonna get created by this little bit of additional impervious. We're pitching that backwards to get it to this catch basin here, so it doesn't run directly under the neighbor. But that means it's all still outletting in this one spot, so that's really the, the focus.
The pinch point there, I see that.
Yeah, great.
Thanks a lot, Will.
Yeah.
As far as the vegetation, the comments that Sherry had, and I, I'm glad that Marcy is entertaining like meeting with her, but um, we also need to remember that whatever, um, they come up with needs to comply with ordinance requirements, so, um, Will, I'm sure, Will, you'll just, um, make sure that.
Yep.
This is, okay, thank you.
Anita, did you have something now?
Um, I had trouble when I was studying this map, finding the catch basins. I'm glad to see that there's a new one being put on in the new um, parking lot. I'm, I, I'm still trying to, um, get a fuller understanding of where the water's going from the paved areas. Uh, looks, you pointed out a stone apron that's on the abutting property owner's land. Is that okay with that property owner? And, um, I'm seeing this, you know, the red and the blue arrow for, uh, for water drainage is this right by the big garage door of the storage facility there in the parking area. Um, that, that, um, water is basically no, no, um,
Down.
No, to the east of that. Down at the bottom, yeah, th- those two big arrows. Um, no, not that one, the, the ones right in the middle of the existing driveway there, looking, going, yep, those. Um, so that water, basically, any water that doesn't go into the catch basin on the new parking area is gonna head out, is it gonna go down onto Mount Batty Street on the paved road?
There's a ba, there's a basin right here and one right here, so the water that comes from this area is directed to thi, these two basins. The water coming from down here goes to this one, the water coming down here goes to this one.
Okay.
I will point out that there's an easement for the drainage on the abutting property.
Oh, okay.
And, and so the, the abutting owner may not have agreed to it, but they did buy the property subject to the easement.
I see, okay.
Yeah, it was there when they purchased it. Like I said, this was all one property when this was constructed.
Also, the, um, the plantings of the trees on the north side of the new larger parking lot, are those, um, uh, will there be that much planting put on as a screening, or is this just kind of, um, be made, made to look pretty? I'm not, I'm never clear on these maps whether it's, um, it's.
That was probably the largest part of the discussion last time when we got this approval. Um, was how much there should be there and, you know, where it should be. Um, a lot of people didn't realize the distance between the pavement and the property line. Um, and so, you know, we had to explain that, you know, we, we couldn't plant out here. Um, and so, but it is proposed to, to put these trees in and there is these symbols represent specific size and, and type of trees.
Okay, good.
In fact, I think that the condition was last time that we, that Michael met with some of these neighbors worked out the details of this landscaping plan and the planning board gave Steve Wilson at the time authority to give us final approval once this was worked out.
Good.
So that's kind of how that came about last time.
Okay.
I'd prefer it to show on the plan and not be up to code officer to sign off on it, just so moving forward and
Right.
And Will addressed it on here and, and I did talk with, um, and she revised some of the buffers to meet our standards, so they do meet our standards. This one actually exceeds our standards, so.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, I had a question.
Go ahead, Pat.
Um, Will, on the new paved areas, is that the type of pavement that you get a lot of drainage right within the pavement itself? I'm, I'm forgetting the.
Yeah, like a porous pavement?
Yeah. Impervious pavement?
Yeah.
Impervious?
Yeah, well, no, no, it's just normal pavement, like everything else that's out there. So the water will, there won't be any water that'll infiltrate through the pavement. It'll all go into this catch basin system.
So that is the impervious.
Impervious. Exactly.
Does the catch basin, the new one, does that drain to the same apron, or does it go somewhere else?
No, it, it ties to the same system. It just connects right here.
And that's why Will is saying that's really the pinch point on the whole thing.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, all the water that comes down this ditch line on Mount Batty Street, the town ditch line is picked up right here. This basin is there mainly just for the change in direction. And then you've got a twelve-inch pipe that comes to here. That's where we're connecting into that catch basin. And then that comes over, connects to these, and there's, there's foundation drains around the building that also connects into this system. And, uh, a big part of this roof is flat. And so the roof water is actually connected into this system.
Oh, wow. I'm curious about whether the clear story is surrounded with, um, windows to provide natural light to the warehouse.
It is.
It is, and, and that's the issue that we have is the windows are leaking, so we've decided we're gonna raise the roof to prevent that because the windows sit right on the roof. So that's why we're having to do, that's why we're doing.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get snow drips right up against them and then, you know, it's not a good situation, so this is gonna be much better. But they do provide a lot of natural light.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, how's the rest of the board feeling? Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Um, so, at the beginning of this, we talked about the, uh, I guess this plan was approved and now it's expired, that approval's expired, correct?
Yes.
And and since that last approval, uh, the only things that have changed are the size of the parking areas and the height of the building. Are they the, or are they?
No, we we really haven't changed any of those.
The height, I think just the height of the building, the clear story, I think is the only tweak.
Um.
Real tweak, right?
Right.
Okay, so those parking areas were the same size when it was approved last time?
Yes.
Okay, that wasn't clear in my head. I just wanted to.
Hey, hey, Jeremy, was was Sanders on the board when it was approved?
Yes.
That's good to know. He's he's my, he's my water flow man.
Thank you.
For everything.
And Dave St. Laurent is again looking at this as I am um and with Will and we're going to make sure the stormwater is addressed appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, I I, you know, I'm just really sensitive to the whole, the whole idea of water on the road, erosion around the property, the end of the driveway, all that stuff. It's a hassle as a neighbor and and it's like, you know, it can, it can, it cannot happen two years running and then all of a sudden, you know, one storm event and you've got you've got the issue. And so anything we can do to improve that would really, would really sit well with me. Anybody else have anything they want to comment on? Any questions for Will? Anything further you would like to see in the application? Go ahead, Mark.
Well, I just wonder if we ought to set up a sidewalk.
Yeah, I think we should. That was my next step, as soon as I wanted, as soon as everybody had their chance. So looks like we're all set here. So sidewalk on this one. Will, when were you hoping to apply, get the final app? Okay, I know you were kind of already ready to go.
Yeah, I think that uh, Marcy, unless there's a real reason to push for the sixth, if we plan for the twentieth of uh January, then that'll give us a little bit of time to coordinate some of these things and make sure we have submissions in ahead of time.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy with the twentieth.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, we're going to run up against the same uh scheduling issues that we had in the last one. Um everybody want to do two sidewalks in one day or split them up?
Uh, I was going to say, could we do it at like, and how long do we need for the dock? And then we'll just all go over to this shouldn't take very long.
Why don't we do it first? Do this at nine AM?
Yeah.
The dock is on the tenth. You said the twentieth. I'm confused.
A meeting on for the twentieth.
Right.
A meeting for the twentieth, but the walk was going to be on the tenth.
Okay.
Give us a trial run for the Zoom meeting with you, Anita, out in the field.
And then, and then Marcy said she'd have coffee and donuts for us.
Exactly. Perfect. You're welcome to come in and join me.
So I suggest nine AM on January.
Jerry, tenth.
That works for me. Anybody have an issue with that other than our uh traveling Anita?
Perfect.
All right. Um, that sounds good. So that's, that's on, uh, Jeremy, you've got that.
Yeah.
Another public hearing, essentially a public meeting. Um, uh, for the sidewalk, we'll be covering two and and one, one fell swoop. And um, I want to thank everybody for their time and attention to these um, these applications. And Will, thank you very much for your um, your presentations.
Yeah, you got, thank you. I appreciate the board's efforts.
Thanks, Will. Thanks, Marcy.
Thank you.
And Chris, are you ready for your big motion?
To adjourn.
Do we have to do something about other future meetings or those already on, Jeremy?
Um, the future, future meeting for, we're going to do the erosion control um hearing on the sixth. That's not happening. So um we'll just get that. I think next, the sixth, we'll probably talk, just jump back into um housing. And uh, I'll I'll send in the meantime, I'll kind of, honestly, I haven't had a second to do any of that, what I was going to do um yet. So I'll send that to you all. Um, kind of what, what we talked about, draft ordinance possibilities. I'll all the section, send you sections from the comp plan that look at housing and lot sizes and those kinds of things. So um, we'll just, we'll do that on the sixth. It'll be another workshop as of now. Sound good?
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. And yeah, let's, let's, we've got, I've got until seven o'clock, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Or.
Seconded.
Oh, nice. We got a motion to adjourn and a second. Um, uh, Anita?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Crisso?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Thank you all.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give Will a chance to chime in too. You ready to adjourn, Will?
What's that?
Are you ready to adjourn?
I'm good. Yeah, thanks.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
All right, have a good night.
Yeah, have a great festival.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas.